Mayor Prostem Tamayo.
Here.
Councilmember Peralta.
Present.
Councilmember Alonso.
Councilmember Romero.
Present.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular session of the council meeting. At this time, I'll turn over to our city attorney to provide a report on the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The record should reflect that the city council convened for closed session, that prior to recessing to closed session, the three items that are listed on the agenda were included or announced, I should say, prior to recessing into closed session, and that once in closed session, the four members of the city council that are present tonight were in closed session to discuss those three items. The record should further reflect that on items one and two, direction was provided to the workers' comp special counsel on those two matters, two workers' compensation matters, but there was no required action to be announced at this time. On item three, the public employee performance evaluation, that matter was discussed, and there was no action taken on that item, but direction was provided. With that, that's my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you for the report. I just would like to acknowledge that my colleague, Councilor Alonso, will not be able to join us for this meeting. And we'll go ahead and start with invocation. If I can please have our city clerk do the invocation and our city treasurer for the pledge of allegiance. If you can all please rise.
We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day as it comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day, as it comes for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
All ready, begin. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the next item, corrections to the agenda. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Yes, Mayor, council members, we have a couple corrections. At this time, we are adding a presentation for La Carniceria Meat Market. Additionally, item number 20, we have a clerical error that we're correcting. The subject line incorrectly lists RFP number 26-05. It should read RFP number 26-06. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So we'll go ahead and move on to the ceremonial items in our presentation. If I can please have my colleagues join me up on the stage, and we'll have the item of La Carniceria Meat Market. How's everyone doing? I think, I think we all feel safe around here with all, the whole police department We, we wanted to present this recognition to La Carniceria Meat Market. We have the owner, we have the representative there as well. A few months ago, they reached out to us, that they wanted to do something special for our police department, and they were able to provide lunch for our police department out of their pocket, just to thank them for all of their service, for all of their hard work. So we're here to present them. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. So I'll read a little bit about Jose Luis Ruiz, and then I'll have him come up here, maybe say a few words, and we'll, we'll go ahead and take some, some pictures, and I don't know, maybe you have some meat for us today, and we can have a carne asada outside. Jose Luis Ruiz is the founder and CEO of La Carniceria Meat Market, a business that has grown from a small butcher shop in South Gate into a thriving chain with 25 locations across California and Texas. Originally from Jalisco, Mexico, Mr. Ruiz arrived in Los Angeles in 2010, and through perseverance and dedication, transformed his vision into one of the most respected and successful butcher shop brands in the region. His business accomplishments are impressive. Mr. Ruiz is equally recognized for his deep commitment to philanthropy and community service. He has done efforts to support local families in need, contributed generously to various causes, and consistently shown appreciation for law enforcement. Under his leadership, La Carniceria has served complimentary lunches to more than 1,000 police officers throughout the Los Angeles area. Most recently, in August, La Carniceria catered a special appreciation lunch for the entire Montebello Police Department, recognizing their dedication and service to the community. In recognition of his outstanding contributions to both businesses and community, the city of Montebello is happy to present him with a certificate of appreciation. So if we can please give him a round of applause, and if you can come up here as well.
So I got, I'm not Jose Luis Ruiz. He was here earlier, but he had to leave, because we thought the meeting was going to be at six o'clock, so it was running kind of late. I'm the government affairs, is our VP, Edwin. We're just very flattered and humbled by this recognition to La Carniceria Meat Market. As you stated, Mayor, philanthropy is one of the biggest things for, for our company under the leadership of our CEO, Jose Luis. Edwin, want to say a few words?
We'll bring you meat anytime you want, any day. But thank you, guys. Thanks to all, everybody. We're very proud to do anything we can to help. Anything you guys might need as a city, please feel free to reach out. We will definitely be happy to help you guys out.
And I want to emphasize, thank you to Chief Lopez for all the support, and just that you guys are here for supporting him. Also, La Carniceria Meat Market is here to support you, the council, and all the, all PD. Just by the way, I'm going to brag about that you guys can go to any of our store and mention you're a law informant, and we'll give you 15% discount, because law enforcement, we love you guys. So anything we could do for, for you guys, for the city of Montebello, that's what we're here for. Thank you, Mayor.
and mention you're a law enforcement, and we'll give you fifteen percent discount because law enforcement, we love you guys. So anything we could do for, for you guys, for the city of Montebello, that's what we're here for. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the second presentation, which is the hydrogen fuel bus development, and it's a presentation from consultants from CTE, Todd Walton and Cynthia Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we're, Montebello Bus Lines is excited to have our partners from the Center for Transportation and the Environment. CT has been working with us in, as we build out our zero emissions bus facility and fleet transition plan. The genesis of this project really was initiated in October of 2021 with the adoption of our zero emissions bus rollout plan in accordance with CARBS innovative clean transit regulations, which requires transit agencies to be zero emissions by 2040. So we are excited to have CTE as our partners. Again, as the mayor mentioned, we do have Cynthia Gibson and Todd Walton with us this evening. CT is nationally recognized for their work in the hydrogen landscape, and they are one of the founding partners of California's statewide hub, Hydrogen Hub program, known as Arches. So we are excited to have them with us this evening and working on our zero emissions bus, hydrogen bus development program. And so without further ado, we do have Ms. Gibson presenting this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for giving us the time to come and update you on our project. Because this is my first time addressing the council, I want to give a little bit of a background, a little bit more information than what John provided about CTE. We are a five oh one C three planning and engineering firm that develops and implements advanced technology vehicles in supporting infrastructure. So we have over thirty years of experience in working with these advanced technologies. We are actively working on a little over a hundred forty projects. Currently, we specialize, as we said, in zero emissions transition technologies. And we have, our headquarters is in Atlanta with offices in Berkeley, Denver, and St. Paul. We specialize, or our focus is on technology development. We do transition plans. Those transition plans are plans that we help agencies put together for a long-term forecast to implement those advanced technologies. We do have specialized groups that work in advocacy and also grant writing. And we also help these agencies implement or, or deploy these technologies with our smart deployment methodology. We wanted to speak a little bit to Montebello's plans. We want to point out that they are among the first smaller, medium-sized transit agencies in the U.S. to adopt hydrogen technologies at scale. So with the procurement of the first three buses, which we are set to deliver in a month or so, and also the start of this project, this will be the kickoff for the beginning of a phase plan that will result in a hundred percent of Montebello's fleet transitioning to hydrogen fuel cell. So let's talk a little bit. Although the technology is probably new, it, it will be new to the city. There is a considerable amount of data pertaining to operations for hydrogen fuel cell buses. I wanted to highlight just a few. We have some benefits on the slide here, but fifty-two, each fuel cell bus avoids about fifty-two tons of carbon dioxide annually. These buses are comparable to diesel fuel cell buses in refueling time. That refueling time is about ten to fifteen minutes with a range per fill of a little over three hundred minutes. So that will make it much easier for us to transition into the regular operation. We are anticipating these will be an improvement for rider experience. And also, this technology really will enhance the service reliability. The project team is currently working on procurement activities for the temporary fueling station. Current plans are for that temporary fueling station to be active probably in Q1 of next year. We've also started procurement activities for the maintenance facility upgrades and also the permanent fueling station, which will be a little bit longer. However, the project team is engaging internally with all external and internal stakeholders, including city planners, the fire department, and any other AHJs or authorities having jurisdiction to ensure compliance with safety at all levels. Montebello is actively researching funding for the project. This will be a phase plan, as I said. So we, CTE is actively supporting that effort to research and look for funding and also apply for funding. For this project, it's supported from the Federal Transit Administration's Urbanized Area Formula Program. But we are looking into other, other funding opportunities. Specifically for, as a partner, CTE is providing technical guidance. We, I have some of the activities that we will be looking at or supporting. Montebello with infrastructure planning, fire suppression, fire, safety protocols are a must. We are doing a number of consumption analysis. We are doing fleet and and service analysis, looking at those routes for these buses when we get them put on. The team is also providing guidance with the maintenance facility upgrades, just to make sure that we adhere to all of the, the regulations needed for that. And then we'll have ongoing community outreach support as we get into, further into the project when the fueling stations are being put together. So I know that was pretty quick, but I'm gonna wrap up with this one. This timeline and next steps. As I said earlier, we are working on the temporary fueling station to be put, hopefully that is put together in Q1 of next year. And then I also talked a little bit earlier about the buses that will be delivered. When those buses are delivered, they'll go into an acceptance program, an acceptance period, where we'll make sure everything is working properly and the fueling process is there. And once that happens, CTE's team will come in for some data collection and KPI work. We, that will last probably for twelve months or so. We have ongoing infrastructure investments. As I said, we'll also be working on a permanent solution. And then the federal funding and state funding activities will continue. That is everything I have for the council today. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I'll look to see if any of my colleagues have any questions, comments. We'll start off with Councilmember Peralta.
Yes, thank you so much for today's presentation. I think my question might be more directed towards our transit director, understanding that we're going to be introducing this new technology, a new fueling source. In terms of our workforce, how are we equipping our mechanics in terms of being able to maintain and fix these new types of bus systems?
Now, that's a great question, council member. So currently, we've been sending our team, we've been very intentional in the different types of conferences and trainings that we're sending our team to since my arrival of last March of 2024. One of the trainings that we did send our team to, specific to hydrogen and the work that CTE has also done with AC Transit up north, is we sent our team out to Berkeley to give them exposure to the operations of hydrogen, not only the hydrogen bus, but the hydrogen facility. One of the things that we've also done is we've, we've baked into the contract with the purchase of our buses, additional training and equipment. So once those buses arrive, those buses will also arrive with the necessary training and the necessary equipment to ensure that our mechanics are properly trained, not only to handle the buses, but also to handle the facility, once we make that transition into hydrogen zero mission, of zero mission fleet.
Okay, do any of my other colleagues have any other questions, comments?
I just would like to comment. So thank you for your partnership in helping Montebello move in this direction. This is going to be new for us, but there's, you know, plenty of benefits for us. We have zero emissions, reduce greenhouse gases, and also improving our rider environment. So thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Okay, wanna echo the same sentiments as my colleagues, and just want to thank you for the presentation. And thank you to our transit director as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to working with the team.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, oh, public comments on non-agenda items.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. The, this opportunity is for anyone who wishes to address the city council on those items that are not on the agenda. You would have three minutes to address the city council, and you would have had to turn in a card at this point. Mr. City Clerk, do we have comic cards for non-agenda items?
Yes, we do.
How many do we have?
We have a total of nine speaker cards.
Nine, okay. We have the first thirty minutes, so we should hopefully get through those first items. Your record should reflect, right now it's seven twenty-three. And Mayor, with your permission, may the city clerk call the first card.
Yes, if we can please have the first speaker.
First speaker is Lieutenant William Molinari.
Good evening, Mayor Melendez, city council, and also city manager Alvarez, and Chief Lopez, and all directors. I'm here in the capacity as a vice president of the Montebello Police Management Association, and I'm here to read a letter of support for Chief Lopez. On behalf of the Montebello Police Management Association, the MPMA, we are honored to express our strong and unwavering support for Police Chief Luis Lopez. Under Chief Lopez's leadership, the Montebello Police Department has made a meaningful progress in key areas such as public safety initiatives, technology upgrades, expanding staffing levels in both sworn and professional staff positions, and fostering leadership, development, and mentorship among sworn and professional staff, officer wellness programs, and community engagement. Chief Lopez has worked tirelessly to strengthen trust between law enforcement and public, promote accountability, and modernize police strategies for the benefit of every Montebello community member. Chief Lopez's leadership reflects integrity, professionalism, and a clear vision for the future of the department. The MPMA fully supports his continued efforts to enhance public safety, advance departmental operations, and foster collaboration with the community. On behalf of the Montebello Police Management Association, I submit this letter in support of Police Chief Luis Lopez. The MPMA, composed of captains and lieutenants, remains committed to working alongside Chief Lopez in leadership, innovation, and service to the Montebello community. We sincerely thank Mayor Melendez, the city council, and city manager Alvarez for your time and ongoing support of Chief Lopez and the Montebello Police Department. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Monique Delaboe, followed by MPOA. Sorry, the next speaker is Monique, and then followed by MPOA.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Monique Delaboe, and I have had the privilege of working for our police department for nearly thirty-seven years. I am here today, and not just as a long-tenured employee, but as a representative of the dedicated civilian staff who serve alongside our officers every day. In all my years, I have had the opportunity to work with many leaders. But I stand before you today to speak in strong support of our current chief police, Lopez. Though the chief has been with us for just six months, the positive changes he has brought to our department have been, been both evident and impactful. Under his leadership, we have seen a renewed sense of morale and unity within our department. He has fostered an environment where members of our team, regardless of rank or title, feels heard, respected, and supported. The chief has prioritized the well-being and development of his team, recognizing that a strong, cohesive department is built on trust and mutual respect. The chief has also been transparent and proactive in his approach to community engagement, always listening to feedback and taking action when necessary. This commitment to accountability and progress is a reflection of the integrity he brings to this position. It is clear to me and to many of my colleagues that he is working tirelessly to improve not just the operations of the department, but the relationships we have with the citizens we serve. As someone who has seen many changes over the years, I am confidently, excuse me, I can confidently say that the leadership we have today is making a positive difference. Change can be difficult, and not everyone will agree with every decision made. But I urge you to consider the broader picture. The chief's dedication to building a department that is strong, responsive, and reflective of the values we hold dear to our community. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the men and women who serve the city every day.
Thank you for your comments. We can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is MPOA, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city manager Alvarez. My name is Omar Rodriguez. I'm the president of the Montebello Police Officers Association, and I'm here to provide a statement on behalf of the association. The Montebello Police Officers Association is aware of recent public comments made during city council meetings over the recent months that were critical of our chief of police. While we respect the public's right to voice their opinions at open forums, we want to take it, we want to make it explicitly clear that the association did not solicit or encourage any member of the public to speak on our behalf during these meetings. The views expressed by those individuals are their own and do not represent the position of the Police Officers Association or its members. Our association remains focused on its mission, supporting the men and women of the Montebello Police Department who work tirelessly to serve and protect our community with professionalism and integrity. We also continue to work collaboratively with department leadership to ensure our members have the tools, training, and leadership needed to perform their duties effectively. At this time, we believe it is important to avoid unnecessary division and to continue fostering constructive dialogue that benefits the entire community. We appreciate the public's engagement and support and encourage respectful discourse as we all work together to keep Montebello safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo, followed by Raúl Hurtado.
Buenas noches. Mayor Salvador Melendez, el miembro del Consilio, yo soy Rosa Tamayo. Quiero decirles que se necesitan viviendas accesibles de precio y accesibles a personas con necesidades que estén en, en sillas de ruedas o en otras discapacidades. Porque no hay departamentos, facilidades de vivienda que tengan estas, lo que tienen que tener un ADA. Y por favor, porque yo he estado mirando todas las facilidades y no hay una vivienda accesible. Por favor, necesitan también tener un control de renta. Por favor, necesitan también tener un control de renta, porque la gente no está, no tiene dinero, no tiene dinero para estar costeando el alto costo de la vivienda. El otro problema es que ustedes, Georgina Tamayo, concejal, y usted también, Peralta, que yo me recuerde, también Romero, y el otro, Alonso, votaron para una estación de policía en el sur de Montebello. Y saben qué? Nomás es un cuarto. Necesita el oficial que esté allí, necesita todo lo que se necesite para hacer reporte. No tiene que venir hasta acá a hacer el reporte. Pasan muchas cosas en el distrito del sur de Montebello. Y no nomás ahí están, tienen un cuarto. Es mucho lo que se gastó para tener un cuarto nomás. El otro problema es que hay mucha gente que están desalojando por lo mismo, porque hay un problema de vivienda accesible. Vuelvo con lo mismo, pero es un problema grande. Y por favor, este, pongan atención cuando vayan a hacer una, un proyecto, o vayan a hacer una decisión de hacer un, como lo que hicieron de tener un cuarto allá nomás. Háganlo bien, hagan un trabajo bien, no nomás, oh, tanto dinero, hay miles, voy a ponerlo a hacer esto. No, por favor.
Gracias por su comentario. If we can please have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Raúl Hurtado, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Yeah. Good evening. I was here gonna talk about my three-minute series about Chief Lopez, but I was surprised when all this solicited associations came over here. And I say solicited because it's very clear that he solicited it, and I know who he solicited with. And that person that he solicited with is not a very good person, and I could see a lot of things. There was an investigation on him supposedly started quite a few times, and our city manager squashed it. This person is a, to say, for a lack of words, he likes his lips up somebody's anus all the time. He wrote a letter to the last city manager praising him for all the great work he done. Out of line, that shouldn't come from him. Got rid of the last city manager, now he prays, he wrote a letter for you guys and the city manager praising him for all the work he's done too. This man should have been fired a long time ago, and yet, he solicited it. He knows he shouldn't be in that chair as chief. I don't care what these guys say. The word integrity was used several times. That guy has no integrity.
Mr. Hurtado, you can direct your comments to us, please.
Okay, I'm trying to direct it. That guy has no integrity. If he had integrity, and that man up there, the cancer cell that came from Huntington Park, he wouldn't be there. He would have been fired, but he retired. Everybody knows that. And yet, he comes back because that man appointed him. Why would you appoint somebody that was gonna be fired for what he did? This encourages me to keep up, because now I know I'm getting to him. This encourages me to keep up and give you the series of how he got that job, and then maybe these other officers that don't know will change their mind in the support for him. You know, I'm sick and tired of this cover-up. He has split the police department in half. I have asked for help in my neighborhood when Chief Espinoza was here, and I got the help I needed. They made three arrests, got a search warrant, took care of problems. Now, it has come and grown up again. I'm looking for help. I'm not getting no help. I'm going to an outside agency, because I'm not getting any help from that man full of integrity. I'm sorry to have to come up like this, but more people need to come up and speak about this and all this BS with these guys that come here, and I respect them, but they need to know the truth. They need to know the truth, and I will make copies of that letter that was sent to you guys, and any police officer that wants to see it with a signature of the person that sent it, I'll be glad to give you some copies. This has gotta be stopped. That man should go back into retirement.
Thank you for your comment.
A lot of damage.
If we can please have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Tila Gregorian.
Good evening, honorable mayor, staff, and community. This evening, I'd like to speak on a few items that are concerning to our community. I watched a clip from a meeting in the city of Whittier, council meeting, and a man went up to the podium, and he clapped his hands to get their attention. He said, "I want you all to know I met with the FBI, and they are coming to the city of Whittier to investigate the corruption by all of you on the dais." Well, guess what? We don't have to wait for the FBI to come to Montebello. They're here already investigating, and a couple of you have already met with them. Now, you Tamayo and you Scarlett need to wonder who's gonna get you first. Will it be the FBI, or will it be the Office of Public Integrity with the district attorney? As for the cleanup on Lincoln, Georgina, make sure you get the city, or you do your homework, and get permission from the Army Corps of Engineers. Do not do what Rick did and go to the riverbed to do the cleanup and cause the city to be sent a letter of cease and desist for entering their property. Please do your homework. Prior council members have tried to clean that up, and were told that it's between the LA County and the Army Corps of Engineer to do the cleanup. They did not allow the city of Montebello on their property. Please, before the city tries to hold another car show, please do your homework. Various residents said it was mainly the people from the car clubs like you Romero attending. How much did that use of city property cost us? Just like the waste of the dog park, seven hundred thousand dollars for that sorry excuse, which should have been better used to improve the playgrounds for the children in our community. I don't think any resident would complain if seven hundred thousand dollars would have been used to improve the playgrounds, including one for special needs children. That would have been top priority in all of our books. Back in April, I gave you all a bill for your stipends that was paid to you when one meeting was canceled. I gave the full month to you, Scarlett, because you were missing the whole month. When the month of July came, it went dark, again, you got paid for the full month. You owe us, the residents, that money back. Then I look up and see the report from the treasurer, fourteen point seven hundred thousand dollars less in revenue for the last quarter. How can you, in any good conscience, when you didn't do your job, get paid your stipends? Shame on you. Please make a motion that council members will not be paid if they do not attend a meeting, just like commissioners. They do not get paid if they don't attend a meeting. Also, any city employee or commissioner must have a live scan test to be involved in the city. Since you are our public leaders, lead by example. Take a live scan. It would be very interesting to see if all of you have clean criminal backgrounds.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Tila Gregorian, followed by Felipe Acuña.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and Montebello residents. My name is Sheila Gregorian, but I am speaking on behalf of Margie Duarte. She's a retired deputy sheriff, and she was not able to be here today. So, this is what she wrote here. Honorable Mayor Melendez and community, I ask my letter to be read for me. As a retired deputy sheriff, I did go to the Norwalk Sheriff's Station car show, which benefit the families of three arson detectives killed during a July explosion. In my opinion, that is a reason to use city facilities to honor and benefit the officers that wear the badge and serve their community, not for a member on the council that belongs to the orphaness car club, you Romero. That is not an acceptable use of our city properties and may even be illegal for her, and that's why it was called a city car show, when we all know that that was BS. Also, it is legal for the city seal to be posted at the building in the south. It is not a substation, so what good does it do? Margie Duarte, retired deputy sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Felipe Acuña, followed by Greg Gonzalez.
I'm speaking on item number six on the agenda. Yeah, it's a public, let's see. Yeah, it's a public hearing, so we'll call you there. We'll call you when that item comes up. Yeah.
Next speaker then will be Greg Gonzalez.
We waited one hour for all of you for this meeting to start. Please consider holding closed session at the end of city council meeting. The good people at Lock Carney City Market Meat Market thought the meeting started at six. They were right. It did start at six for seven lucky people. The rest of us waited around trying to guess what the meeting will start shortly means. Please sow some manners. How about moving closed session to the end of the meeting in January? Gives everyone the fall season to adjust. Onward we go. Congratulations to the city on its sustainability efforts with clean fuel technology on buses and the construction of solar panel structures in the parking lot. Not a complete list. Now, it's time to continue the momentum by passing a single-use plastic ban. Those plastic water bottles on your desks have a five percent chance of being recycled, a seventy-five percent chance of ending up in a landfill, and a twenty percent chance of ending up in the ocean. Consider what other places around the world have done. The European Union has banned ten common single-use plastic items such as cutlery, plates, straws, and has also banned styrofoam containers. The United Kingdom has banned coffee cups, single-use coffee cups, containers, cutlery. They also tax plastic bags of all kinds. Kenya has banned all single-use plastics, which they did so in two thousand seventeen. Rwanda banned single-use plastic bags and packaging in two thousand eight. Mexico City has banned single-use plastic bag straws and coffee cup covers, admittedly with challenging enforcement problems. We can't wait for the US to act as a nation. We can lead and show the county, the country, and the world that we care about climate change, environmental justice, and our children. I will re-mail the council, the city manager, and the city attorney regarding a sensible path toward, about, and toward progress on this issue. I look forward to a response, and I pledge to marshal more support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other speakers?
Mayor, that concludes all speaker cards for non-agenda items.
Okay. Thank you for all the speakers. We'll move on to staff communication, items of community.
Yes, sir. We have a couple items that we wanna update the community about. First, I want to share some good news. The city of Montebello has been named the finalist for the most business-friendly city in LA County by LAEDC. This is a strong honor. Hopefully, we win it. It's a testament towards our planning, our planning department, and the initiatives that we implement as a city to ensure that we're business-friendly. We strive to make sure that we have a smooth and seamless process. We also engage businesses directly. It's truly a testament towards Joe Palumbi, his staff, and all the hard work that they do on a daily basis. So, let's keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully in November, we hopefully win this over. Thank you. Oh, and then, we have one more item. Davis Ostrowski, Parks and Rec, is gonna be talking about an event that we're having this week.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. We'd just like to invite all the public, all the pet owners alike, over to our dog park at Henry Acuña Park. This Saturday, September twenty-seventh, we'll be hosting our first organized event there since the grand opening of the dog park, which was very successful, and continue that momentum of that great facility that we built there. So, this Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from eleven AM to noon, we're hosting what's being called the Pub-a-palooza from eleven to noon. As I mentioned, we'll feature pet resources, local vendors, a photo booth, and much more resources for folks to come out and enjoy the dog park, get a little bit of information, and have some free giveaways. So, once again, I want to invite the members of the public to the first organized event at the dog park this Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from eleven AM to noon PM, to twelve PM, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That concludes our comments, Mayor.
Good. Thank you, City Manager, and to our director Ostrowski for the updates. We'll move on to our public hearing. We do have two items for public hearing, so we'll begin with item number five, which is to approve resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-nine amending the Community Development Block Grant, CBPG fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, annual action plan to include additional funding and adopt resolution number twenty-five dash seventy approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, consolidate annual performance and evaluation report. We don't have a presentation, but we do have our community development director and city manager and staff here to answer any questions. It is a public hearing, so at this time, it's seven forty-six. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
We do not? Okay, so, the public hearing is open. If there's any member from the audience that would like to speak on this item, your time is now.
The record should reflect that no one is stepping forward, so, Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate to close the public hearing.
So, at this time, I will close the public hearing at seven forty-seven and bring it up to council-level discussion. I'll look to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on this item. Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item.
I motion to approve. I second.
We have a first by Mayor Protem, and we have a second by Councilman Romero. If I can please have a roll call?
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. All right, we'll move on to item number six, that is also a public hearing, and that is the to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four eighty-three, amending chapter seventeen of the Montebello Municipal Code to establish chapter seventeen point forty-one viewshed preservation overlay. So, for this one, we do have a presentation by our director of planning and community development. I'll pass it on to Joe Palumbi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, good evening. So, this item is a city-initiated text code amendment, and it would amend chapter seventeen point forty-one of the code to create a viewshed preservation overlay. The proposed viewshed ordinance would establish regulations to protect and preserve scenic views that contribute to Montebello's unique visual character, and this is consistent with the general plan, specifically goal number six of the general plan, which calls for the preservation of mountain, and I believe scenic city lights is what it's titled. So, this is consistent with our award-winning general plan, I should say. So, and the ordinance is focused on preserving the community's access to scenic views through planning safeguards on proposed improvements that include, but are not limited to, new structures or additions that block views, as well as unmanaged vegetation. And just to give some background, on August fifth of two thousand twenty-five this year, the Planning Commission did approve the draft ordinance that's before you tonight with a recommendation for city council approval. So, this is a sample visual impact analysis that would be required pursuant to the ordinance, and it is important to note that the proposed ordinance will not preclude construction or new development. Again, it would not preclude new development in the overlay area. Rather, it establishes safeguards to properly analyze proposals and minimize or mitigate potential impacts. For example, the ordinance includes provisions for a visual impact analysis, which you see here on the slide, which will be used to assess and mitigate any impacts to existing viewsheds within the overlay area. And this is just one example of what a visual impact analysis could look like. The analysis should illustrate the view that would be affected by the addition of a structure or fence, and staff would use this information to determine the appropriate next steps. If a project is found to affect the scenic view, the applicant would be required to incorporate measures to minimize visual impacts, such as additional setbacks, non-obscuring design features, and architectural elements that blend with the natural environment. and architectural elements that blend with the natural environment. So this here, um, this basically shows the map, the view shed preservation map, that highlights the areas located on the elevated slopes, um, or which offer scenic views. Uh, its purpose, its purpose is to preserve views of mountainous areas, ridge lines, skyline vistas, city lights, and significant cultural landmarks that are valued by both residents and visitors to Montebello. Um, if approved tonight, this information would be made available on our city website. Um, in addition to the Planning Commission public hearings, and as part of the community outreach effort that was associated with this project, staff hosted a, a booth at the annual street fest where they collected one hundred and eighty-four community surveys. Uh, additionally, on August sixth, uh, staff hosted another booth, um, and thanks to the Parks and Rec Department for making that happen, um, at the city's concerts in the park where we collected an additional twenty-three surveys. So during the community outreach event, staff collected two hundred and seven surveys. This is a sample of what the survey, um, looked like, uh, on this slide here. Uh, and I would just like to take a minute to, um, or an opportunity to recognize Viviana Esparza and Emily Fernandez, who are both here for the Planning Division, uh, for their hard work in engaging the public and collecting these surveys, um, and ensuring that this process was a community-driven process. So here it just shows you some results of the survey. Uh, based on the surveys collected, seventy-one percent of, uh, of those who did, who completed the survey did not know that the city of Montebello was proposing a view shed ordinance, and sixty-six percent did not know what a view shed ordinance was. So this was also sort of an educational component. When asked about how important it is to preserve views, eighty-one percent said that preserving views is very important. Um, and based on the survey, the most important views to preserve are hillside, open space, and views from public parks. Uh, when asked if restrictions on new development would be supported, eighty-nine percent responded yes, uh, with only five percent not concerned that new development, um, could block or impact scenic views. So in, in conclusion, staff's recommendation is that the city council, um, approve this, uh, this, uh, ordinance, and, uh, uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as staff. I would like to just acknowledge that, um, we did receive a comment letter from the, um, California Housing, uh, Defense Fund. Uh, that raises, uh, I think, you know, valid issues when you look at it regionally, um, but nothing, as I mentioned in this presentation, in this ordinance precludes development. Um, this, this ordinance is not, um, intended to conflict with state law. It were, it really works alongside state law, and really, it has measures, um, that are baked into it. For example, section seventeen point forty-one, one hundred of the proposed ordinance provides for an administrative review process, which is consistent with our housing element. When you look at streamlined processes, where we would, um, look at a project, and if it, um, provides a substantial public benefit, i- it would be allowed to move forward administratively, and that would include affordable housing projects, for example. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Palumbi, for the presentation. Uh, at this time, it would be appropriate to open up the public hearing. It's, uh, seven fifty-four. Uh, I do want to, uh, state that we do have some speaker cards. However, because it is a public hearing, after the speaker cards are finalized, the public still has an opportunity, for those that didn't submit a card, to, uh, come up here and, uh, express your, your comments, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, while, while you're calling the first speaker card, uh, the letter that, um, Mr. Palumbi referenced will be placed into the record as part of tonight's hearing. And I should also note that tonight is the first reading of the ordinance. It doesn't, uh, it will have to come back in a second reading, and then, uh, wait thirty days before it is adopted.
Okay, so, uh, if we can please have, uh, call the first speaker.
Yes, Mayor. Before we begin, I also'd like to make a comment, uh, that we, our office did receive a total of ten written public comments in support, and one that was opposed.
Thank you.
Why don't we just enter those in the record? We don't need to read those. We'll just be sure they're part of the record.
First speaker is David Matanga, followed by Amber Carmirian.
Uh, good evening, um, Mayor and council and staff. Uh, my name is David Matanga. I'm right now the city treasurer. I have, uh, called Montebello my home for about twenty-five years. I'm here tonight to urge you to adopt the proposed ordinance to preserve our community's scenic view. Uh, about two years ago, during the general, uh, plan update and feedback gathering efforts, the hillside residents voiced their need for view protections. Specifically, residents request the same protections offered by Rocket Mountain One and Two, C.C.N.R.s, which ensures the preservation of scenic views for hillside homes. Requested was recognized and incorporated as an objective, uh, number six in our latest general plan. Now we are here to codify the general objective, specific objective number six, which calls to preserve the views of the city lights for hillside neighborhoods. Let us finish what we have started by codifying this important general plan objective into law. Adopting this ordinance will protect our neighborhood views for generations to come. For me personally, it's like me buying an expensive Dodger Stadium seat with a pillar in front of it. I have no view, but I spend a lot of money for my property for that view. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Amber Carmirian, followed by Tim Yamamoto.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'm gonna read this time. My name is Amber Carmirian, and I have been a resident of Rocket Mountain One Homeowners Association for over twenty years. When my family and I purchased our home, on the main reason was the beautiful view is offered. As well as we know, homes with the view are rare, especially in desirable city like Montebello, where we proudly live over for thirty-eight years. As the president of, of the Rocket Mountain One Homeowners Association, I'm authorized to speak on behalf of many homeowners who also purchase their properties for the view, which can add eleven to twenty percent to the home's value. We strongly urge the planning department and city leadership to continue making wise decisions to protect these views, not only for their beauty, but also because they represent significant investment for homeowners. We fully respect that neighbors may need privacy, and we support that. Whoever concern arise when some homeowners climb ten, twenty feet into slope land and install vinyl fences or other type of such block walls or wrought iron without city approval or permit. This unpermitted structure directly block views that others invested in a dream of the, when they purchased their homes. Beyond the loss of view, where are, we are also safety issues considers. How safe is digging the slopes? What happens when the heavy rain comes? Will the slopes weaken? Of course. Could muck up the cure? Most likely. And if something happened, who will be responsible? These are critical questions that must be addressed. We respectfully respect that all fences, block, walls, iron, or vinyl, even tree walls be installed only at the ground level and with proper city approval. This approach protects view, ensures slope safety, and the maintenance fairness for all homeowners. I urge you to protect property homeowners by passing view protection ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Tim Yamamoto, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Tim Yamamoto, and my wife and I live in the Brighton Hills area of Montebello. I have been there, or we have been there thirty years now. My backyard has a wide view looking toward downtown Los Angeles and even Mountain Wilson. It's basically maybe a hundred and forty-degree view. I was able to see the Hollywood sign in the distance, and with binoculars, you can clearly read it. There are several trees that have grown, and that view has been obstructed now due to their, uh, growing bigger. Also, there's a house down below me that has been remodeled and recently put on a second floor. The second floor blocks portion of that view. My neighbor, which I really feel sorry for, has mostly lost his view because of the same house, and he is closer to that house. I strongly recommend the city council for their support in the view of the ordinance, uh, for hilltop homes. Uh, I forgot to mention, also, reselling the property, the property value, uh, will be severely impacted because of lack of views. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Alexandra Briseño.
Good evening again. I would like to speak on this issue regarding the view. When I purchased my very first home, my very first property in Montebello, from the Baldwin Brothers, they were the builders of Rocket Mountain One and Two. When I went to see the, the plans, I asked why my house cost more than the house across the street from me that was identical. I was told because my house had a view. That's why it was costing more money. For that reason, please allow this to pass. By not allowing people to not block their view, you're taking away their property value that they invested in when they purchased their properties. And the reason you buy a house with a view unless you have one, it's incredible to sit outside and just look at the view and look at how beautiful the nature and everything. My daughter can see Catalina on a clear day with the view she has. Please don't take their views away. They paid for that property. They invested their money to live here in Montebello with those views, so please pass this.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Alexandra.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Alexandra Briseño, and I live at the corner of North Vale Avenue and Cabot Place. I'm here this evening to urge you to adopt the ordinance that will protect the panoramic skyline views enjoyed by so many residents in our hillside communities. Now, if you're worried that such an ordinance could hinder development, let me put that concern to rest. Hillside lots are small, constrained, and often on steep slopes, which makes them highly unlikely to accommodate large projects, like new apartment buildings. And what's more realistic is that maybe in addition of a second-story A.D.U., and even then, the ordinance will not prevent homeowners from building an A.D.U., it will simply provide placement guidelines to help minimize view obstruction. Now, if I were a councilperson, I'd be concerned about neighbors' privacy. Well, there's ways to mitigate a neighbor's desire for privacy with solutions like patio covers, sl- slotted pergolas with climbing vines, shade sails, or extended roof lines. These solutions can provide privacy for downslope neighbors while still preserving scenic views for those uphill. Other reasons you should consider adopting this ordinance is because this ordinance is consistent with our general plan's objective number six. Our Planning Commission reviewed this proposed ordinance and recommends you adopt it. Montebello HOAs already have bylaws in place to protect scenic views for hilltop homes. It will help maintain property value and fairness. It will prevent the most cherished feature of a home from being taken. It preserves quality of life, community, character, and beauty. It could prevent neighbor disputes with these clear rules in place. And this ordinance is limited in scope because it only applies to the properties in the designated view sh- view shed preservation overlay. Um, also, it can help ensure access to our panoramic skyline views, and in doing so, it'll help keep Montebello desirable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Elaine Arava, followed by Wilfredo Soto.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Melendez, members of the council, and our staff. My name is Elaine Harada, and I'm a resident on the sixteen-hundred block of Jermaine Drive. However, my parents were original homeowners in Brighton Hills, purchasing a home on top of North Vale Avenue for its breathtaking view. I'm here today to ask and encourage you to adopt an ordinance that will protect the scenic and panoramic view. These views were enjoyed by my parents, by current homeowners who paid extra, and by future owners who will probably pay millions of dollars for the same view that my parents paid thirty-six thousand dollars back in nineteen sixty-one. Now, these magnificent cityscape views and are, or may be obstructed by fences or overgrown vegetation for privacy purposes. I understand the privacy part. I put a pergola in my current single-story home for year-round parties and celebrations, and privacy from our two-story neighbors. I love the privacy part. However, I don't understand the obstruction part. When there are alternative solutions for privacy that Ms. Briseño mentioned, patio covers, et cetera. By encouraging these kind of considerate, yet practical approaches, our wonderful city can help promote neighborly harmony, protect our city's property values, and definitely reduce the likelihood of costly controversial disputes. Our country is going through active drama and grief at this time. Please, don't drag our beautiful city down like that. I ask that you embrace and adopt this ordinance and keep Montevale mountain beautiful, beautiful. Thank you very much, Mayor Melendez and members of the council.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Wilfredo Soto, followed by Yvette Fembres.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Councilman. Uh, my name is Wilfredo Soto. I live over in nine-twenty-eight North Rangeton. Have beautiful views. Please adopt this ordinance. I guess everyone here said everything that I feel. Just that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Yvette Fembres, followed by Maria Knox.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Montebello City Council. My family has proudly called Montebello home for twenty-five years, and I stand before you tonight as both a resident and steward of our community's future. I respectfully urge you to adopt the proposed ordinance to preserve our scenic views. This action is not ti- not only timely, it is essential. It affirms our commitment to the principles outlined in our two thousand twenty-four through two thousand forty general plan, a document that serves as a city's blueprint for responsible growth, environmental stewardship, and community well-being. In May of this year, Montebello was honored with the two thousand twenty-five Daniel Burnman, Burnham Planning Excellence Award by the American Planning Association, recognized with the exceptional work of our planning department in updating the general plan. This prestigious honor is a national award, not merely regional or local, placing Montebello among the top planning communities across the entire United States. This achievement is more than a commendation. It is a reflection of our city's promise to uphold thoughtful visionary planning. As you know, California law requires every general plan to address key elements such as land use, mobility, housing, conservation, noise, open space, and safety. Once adopted, it becomes the binding framework that guides all future decisions. City councils are not only expected, but obligated to carry out its objectives. The ordinance before you tonight directly supports objective number six of the, our general plan, to preserve the views of city lights from hillside neighborhoods. This is not a suggestion. It, it is a stated goal. Adopting this ordinance is a necessary follow-through on that promise. Let us be clear. The general plan is not just a policy document. It is a covenant between the city and its residents, a shared vision for what Montebello stands for and what it strives to protect. This ordinance is a tangible step in honoring that vision. I respectfully ask that you adopt this ordinance and reaffirm your commitment to the values and priorities we have collectively embraced. Thank you for your time and for your continued service to our community.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Maria Knox, followed by Felipe Acuna.
Good evening, Mayor Mendez, council member, city manager, and staff. My name is Maria Knox. My name is Maria Knox. I've been a Montebello resident for 30 years. One of the things that I love most about Montebello is the hills and the views the hills provide. I truly believe it's important to have an ordinance in place to prevent views from being blocked that have been in existence since the city became a city. Homeowners pay a premium for homes, whether they're on a hill or not. We enjoy the open air and whatever views our properties provide. It would be very unfortunate for those who pay high price for a view, as some people have mentioned, to lose the view due to unintentional or intentional obstruction of such view. I understand the privacy factor. However, the layout of Montebello, I believe, provides with view and privacy at the same time, because the hills are small, it's not like flat, I don't know. I think I have privacy and I live in the little hill. I therefore stand here to fully support the approval of this ordinance. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the work you guys do for the community. Despite all the tomatoes that you guys throw at you on a regular basis, I am a resident that really appreciate the work that you all put forth, because it's not easy. And I understand what you guys do, and I really appreciate it. And thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Felipe Acuña.
Good evening. I wish I would have went first. Now I'm gonna sound like a rerun, but that's all right. I got my three minutes. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Felipe Acuña from Century 21 Realty Masters, and I'm both a realtor and a homeowner here in the Montebello area. Through my professional experience and personal investments in this community, I have witnessed firsthand the enormous appeal that Hilltop Homes with views, with scenic views, hold for the middle-income families. These prestigious homes, properties consistently stand out as one of our city's most attractive features. The demand for homes with scenic views in the Montebello area are exceptionally high. Currently, I have a list of buyers eagerly waiting for notification when such properties become available. These homes are highly sought after and frequently sell for significantly more than those at market rate for similar homes without a view. Despite the strong demand, I have also observed a troubling trend. Many of the same families that are initially drawn to the city of Montebello for its views eventually leave in search of view homes elsewhere. In other words, while our significant landscape attracts families, shortcomings in our view preservation often drive them away. The decision made by this council will directly influence the dynamics, so I urge you to consider these factors carefully. Can I put my glasses on? I can't say, I forgot I was old. Damn it. Okay, where was I? Okay, let's see. Too often, I've been forced to omit home views from marketing materials because it was blocked by a neighbor's fence landscaping. Repeatedly, I have watched homes lose value due to obstructed views. It is imperative that we help homeowners maintain their property values and protect the cherished features of their home. There is a path forward that allows us to achieve this goal in a harmonious and fair way, minimizing neighbor disputes while restoring both the views and the values that homeowners have paid for and rightfully deserve. Establishing clear and equitable regulations on this issue will not only help preserve property values, but it will protect and promote one of Montebello's most stunning assets, the ridge lines and skyline views. The unique features that are irreplaceable part of our community
Thank you for your comment.
Have their preservation and essential to maintain cities' appeal.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other speakers?
No, Mayor. I just conclude all our speaker cards.
So this is a public hearing, so at this time, is there, if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item, please feel, please come up.
And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Elsa, and I've been a Montebello resident since, well, my parents came here from Italy and landed in Montebello since 1959. They've passed now. Ever since I was a little child raised in Montebello, they always looked up at those hills. In 1972 to 74, they started developing those hills, Racket Mountain 1 and 2 in those areas. And all I could remember is them wanting a house with a view. They never got that dream, but we did. And I just ask and urge that you pass this bill, ordinance, to protect the view, because I still hear those words, and I want my kids to be able to enjoy that view hearing my words. And as a legacy, Montebello, beautiful mountains. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item?
And if you can just please state your name for the record.
My name is Reiko Shivasaki. Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak at this Montebello City hearing. My name is again Reiko Shivasaki, and I live on North Marconi Street in North Montebello since 1964. My father was an anesthesiologist at the Beverly Hospital for about 35 years. He purchased a house for his family on Marconi Street because of the spectacular views of Orange County, Palos Verdes, Catalina on a clear day. I definitely and wholeheartedly support the view protection ordinance because of the scenery, because the scenery has changed dramatically since we, since 1964. But the ordinance will preserve the Montebello skyline views of the cityscapes for everyone, not just those that are living in Montebello. At present, the house below me is under construction after a complete house fire last July, and it is considerably higher. The roof is considerably higher than what it was before, which is, further blocks the view of my house. And I wish that we can all work together to make some kind of accommodations so that we can all find some harmony. And I really appreciate the work of the city council to help us residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one else, at this time, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing. It is 8:19, and we'll bring it over to a council-level discussion. And I'll go ahead and start. I know we all probably have some comments to make, so I'll start in line. We'll go with Mayor Protem Tamayo.
My, I just thank you for bringing this issue up. I think it aligns, as was stated, with state law and with our housing element, as our Director Palumbi stated, even though we received this letter that said otherwise. Also, in speaking to residents, I understand it aligns with the HOA. It aligns also with our general plan, and our planning commission has already approved this. And in addition, the overwhelming residential, resident support for this ordinance. So those are my comments on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll turn it over now to Councilmember Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. I just do want to recognize the effort of residents in District 1 who have really organized to advocate for this type of ordinance, to be able to protect the views that we have left right here in the city of Montebello. I know there are a lot of phone calls, a lot of door knocking, and a lot of conversations that were had to be able to get folks here and to really express really great stories like the one that we heard in terms of the lineage and the legacy that we, of residents that have lived here and that want to continue to preserve views here in the city. And so I just want to thank everyone for their efforts and really for showing up to advocate for this cause. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll turn it over to Councilmember Romero.
Yes, I'd just like to echo what my peers said, and thanks for the community outreach that we did and the presentation that Mr. Palumbi did. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the other suggestions for privacy, because I know that may be a concern to other residents, and there are opportunities for them to still have privacy and then also respect the views of the residents who have, who have spent their life there. And like you said, it's a legacy that has been handed down through the generations, and we want to be able to keep that. So I appreciate everybody's hard work in this.
Thank you, Councilmember. First, just want to thank everybody for participating in this and also for, and I received some calls during the week as well, so thank you all for reaching out. I think we're all in, you know, agreement here in regards to this and, and, you know, especially more hearing the stories, hearing a lot of the feedback and all the, everything you all have said about this. I do want to just question to our team here. We've seen a lot of state bills that are coming down in regards, high-density bills, right? We, in the past, we've seen SB 9, SB 10, SB 50. I know it's in the governor's desk, I'm not sure if it's been signed yet, but I guess my question is, how can we prepare ourselves when we're passing something like this that maybe the state comes down and says, you know, you gotta allow this type of housing project, this ADU? I know we've been seeing a lot of that, and for a lot of folks to know is that there's a lot of state regulations that are coming out that is taking local control away from us. We've been proactive here in the city to voice that concern, but that is something that we just, we do have to have a conversation about. So I'd like to see maybe, you know, if our director or city manager, just any response to that.
Yeah, I'll let Joe Palumbi talk specifically to anything that pertains to this ordinance, but I'll tell you at the administration level, we are currently doing our internal analysis and assessing what would be our next step, specifically with SB 79, which is the one that could significantly impact our local control for our city. So anticipating in the future for us to come, have a report back in terms of what potentially the impacts are, especially since we are having a light rail station in South Montebello. It also impacts our bus stops. We have our own transit system, so it's going to be significant impacts for the city of Montebello. So it's something that we're actively working on and expect for us to come to city council with an update in terms of what the plan is moving forward. Mr. Palumbi, I don't know if you have any, anything in particular pertaining to this ordinance, other than we comply with all state laws, and if something happens with the state law that conflicts with our ordinance, we have to make those adjustments.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, that's correct. This does comply with state law. Just, I would like to note that when we, when we processed our general plan and our housing element, we really looked to the corridors to achieve density, and I believe that's what, for example, SB 79, you know, they look at transit stops and they kind of measure from those distances. So I don't believe this ordinance would impact, you know, the corridors per se, so we would still have the ability to work with the state and, you know, we would come back obviously with information on those particular measures. But again, the ordinance does not preclude development, and in addition to that, you know, there's still CEQA, right? California Environmental Quality Act that, that requires you to look at, for example, aesthetics and, you know, view obstructions and things like that. So regardless, we would still have to deal with that state law for projects that, you know, meet the criteria for a CEQA review. So I just want to put that out there as well.
Thank you both to our Community Development Director and to our city manager for answering those questions. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So we have a first by Councilmember Romero.
I second.
And we have a second by Mayor Protem Tamayo. If I can please have a roll call.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta.
Aye.
Councilmember Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
And I vote aye. Okay, that item carries 4-0, and we'll have a second reading that will be introduced in the near future. All right, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. We don't have any regular business. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have tonight on the consent calendar items number seven through 25, seven through 25. Anyone, all these items are considered to be routine. Any items, any individual member wishes to discuss may be polled at this time, or if, do we have any speaker cards on consent?
No, we do not.
We do not.
Okay, okay. So I will then poll the council members who are present. We will start tonight with Mayor Protem Tamayo.
No items.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralta.
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Romero.
None.
Thank you. And finally, Mayor Melendez.
I have no items.
Be appropriate then, Mr. Mayor, to entertain a motion to approve items seven through 25.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A motion to approve.
We have a first by Mayor Protem.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Peralta. If I can please have a roll call.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta.
Aye.
Councilmember Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
And I vote aye. All right, the consent calendar is approved. We'll move over to AB 1234, travel reports. Do my colleagues have anything to report? I'll look around. Nothing? Okay. All right, we'll move on to our council orals, and we'll begin with our Mayor Protem.
So my council oral is regarding Lincoln Avenue. So I'd like to seek consensus to prioritize a cleanup effort along Lincoln Avenue, particularly the stretch that goes from Avenida, that Lammer said, all the way to San Gabriel. Residents in this area have voiced concerns about debris and overall conditions. I'm aware of the city's efforts to continually clean up this area, but it seems like every time there's a cleanup, there's another dumping. It's continual. So taking action here will not only improve safety and the appearance of this corridor, but it will also strengthen community pride in a highly visible area of our city when you walk, when you drive out that back way.
Okay. I don't know if their city manager has, you know.
Yes, Mayor Protem, if it's a wish of the council, we're happy to work on a cleanup. We actively do cleanups on a monthly basis and focus on some of our high-prone areas. This one is something that on a regular basis, we're maintaining, as it gets reported, but despite our efforts on a regular basis, people still continue to dump. So we are, take some additional efforts, but for sure, one of the things that we're going to do is do a big cleanup, and then we'll come back to council letting you know when we do that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, just for purposes of direction, I'll go ahead and just, we'll do a roll call for, to approve, not to approve, but to move forward with the, with the, this item.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta.
Aye.
Councilmember Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
And I vote aye. Okay, we'll move over to Councilmember Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. My first item is regarding just discussion and direction to develop a medium landscape and entry signage beautification plan for the city of Montebello. My time on council, I've really been on a mission to find ways to really uplift and beautify our city. I think for a long time, Montebello has, unfortunately, due to just the past, has not been able to really focus on items that do beautify and do uplift our city. One of the items that I did want to go ahead and talk to, talk about today was in terms of our corridors and our medium landscapes. Earlier this year, we were able to receive grant funding to plant over 500 trees in the city. We recently, I think about a year ago, adopted a private arts development fund to be able to receive 1% of any future development projects, to basically be able to fund future art initiatives, murals, sculptures, anything to be able to basically create more. art initiatives, murals, sculptures, anything to be able to basically create more art opportunities in the city of Montebello. And so one of the items here today, I think that's really important, is looking at our mediums and looking at the landscaping throughout our major corridors. Our major corridors are that transit area where we have folks coming in and out of the city. And if you really look at Montebello, and it's unfortunate in terms of the love that I have for my city, but if you look at our landscapes, they really are lacking when you are comparing them to other cities. There's lack of native planting, there's lack of trees, and there's really a lack of aesthetics in terms of just how these corridors look. And I know now that as we're working on some major corridor infrastructure here in Montebello, we're beginning to really try to kind of tackle this issue, but I think that we need to have a larger plan in terms of identifying the identity of our city when it comes to future types of medium landscaping, as well as entry signage to the city. Our entry signage markers are extremely old, they're very old designs, they don't look appealing. I want to be able to have something where when residents come home, when they enter our corridors, they feel proud about coming home, they feel proud about the beautification efforts here in Montebello. And so it would be nice if council can provide direction for our city to be able to develop some sort of plan in terms of medium landscaping and new signage, so that when we do leverage new funding opportunities to work on our corridors, that we have a plan in place and we know what these mediums will look like and are able to really, I think, dedicate some aesthetic factors to making Montebello a little bit more beautiful. So we can just have direction for staff to be able to come back with this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead, can we have a roll call just for direction?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta.
Aye.
Councilmember Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
I vote aye.
Okay, my last item is on infant changing stations at city hall and public facilities. Just advocating for these infant changing stations to be at both male and female bathrooms here in the city of Montebello. As we have a lot of families that use our public facilities, whether it's city hall or our local parks, being able to just have a space, a safe space for folks to take care of the needs of their children is extremely important. And so making sure that we are able to provide these types of public facility amenities is important. So if we can be able to install those where appropriate, I understand some restrooms might be a little smaller, but being able to provide that is important.
Yeah, and this one, I don't know if it's as much as council direction, as much as it's something that we're actively looking. It's been brought up to me recently in terms of the lack of changing stations in our public facility. So we are actively assessing all our public facilities. We do have some challenges. We are an older city, sometimes the dynamics of how much space we have and to be able to safely put in changing stations is a challenge, but we're trying to work towards that. But we're happy to report back once we're able to put in changing stations and the ones that we're able to. Okay?
Okay, so I guess we won't really seek direction, but it's more of a report back.
On this one, I mean, this is honestly residents, not only you council. So it's something that we've already been actively looking at. It would be like a query, I would say.
Okay.
We're happy to look at it.
We'll move over to Councilmember Romero.
Yes, good evening. Recently, the city of Montebello hosted an inaugural car show, which provided to be a resounding success. I'm thrilled to express my gratitude to the car enthusiasts who showcased their vehicles and to the city of Montebello for their dedication. It was an honor to be a part of this event, which celebrated the classic car culture that has been a staple of our community for years. Cruising down Woodyear Boulevard is an iconic part of our city's heritage, and it's heartening to see clubs evolve and focus on public outreach and giving back to those in need. The Orpheus Car Club did play a pivotal role in this event's success, and I eagerly anticipate next year's car show. The event also provided a platform to raise awareness about a pressing issue that is deeply concerning to me and it should be to every veteran who has ever served. Currently, there are veterans who have been deported to other countries, stripping them of their benefits in connection to country, to a country they swore to protect. We actively recruit non-citizens from other countries with the promise of citizenship, only to abandon them once their service is complete and their paperwork is incomplete. This is unacceptable. These individuals embody the essence of American values, leaving their homeland with a promise of a better future and signing up to make the ultimate sacrifice if necessary. We must honor our commitment to them. And also, members of the United Deported Veterans Coalition came from San Diego, and they wanted to advocate for these veterans, raising awareness about their plight and the need for our community to fight for their return home. A couple of members of the community, they spoke on this event, and unfortunately, they were not at the event to attend to see the success and the overwhelming positive feedback. I heard another concern was that we had a missed opportunity to have a car show for a good cause. And for me personally, I thought this was an extremely good cause. Every year, we have a Veterans Day celebration, we also have a Memorial Day celebration for our veterans, but we actively don't do anything to support our veterans, and this was my opportunity to give back to the veteran community. So I'm thankful to everybody who came to the car show, and hopefully those who didn't attend, they could come next year and see for themselves what it was about. Another thing on my orals was I wanted to discuss the project going down in South Montebello. It benefits both District Four and Five, and that is the New Police Community Resource Center. It's going to provide safety services and create opportunities for the youth programming. As representatives of the South Side, both myself and Councilmember Alonso have partnered with the police department and public work staff to provide, to launch a capital project that was approved for the June twenty-five, twenty-six budget. It's an underutilized facility at the Chef Hollyfield Park, which will be transformed into a police and community resource center. The South Side community has expressed a need for public safety and community resources. We have advocated for these requests and are excited to implement them. Our goal is to strengthen relationships between the police officers, staff, and the neighborhood. Staff will host youth events, providing a safe and supportive environment. I would like to express my gratitude to the city for diligently working on making this request a reality. Councilmember Alonso and I plan to continue this momentum, which has been long overdue on the South Side, and assure residents that they are both seen and heard. I also would like to recognize that this month is National Suicide Awareness Month, which is observed every month. Please consider reaching out to someone you haven't spoken to recently. Check on someone who, check on your family and peers. Practice active listening, let your friends and family know how much you care about them. Many people are silently battling challenges we are unaware of. Reach out and remind them that they are not alone. The crisis number is nine-eight-eight. Every life is precious, and your life is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, there is no other council orals. Just want to thank everybody who came up, participated in the meeting, for everybody that's here, joining us for a council meeting, also online, and to all of our team here and our staff for putting in the hours to make this happen. So at this time, I'll adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty-nine. Have a good night.